Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please, Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Sienna. We do have a change to our agenda tonight. At the advice of our city manager and our city attorney, we are pulling item B, which is the rezoning of a property on Ronerville Road. Merritt, do we need to postpone it or just? Do we need a date to postpone it to or just postpone it?
I think at this point, we'll just remove it from the agenda from tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Would be my request.
Okay. So do you want to roll on that, just to make sure everyone is in agreement?
Ryan, do you want a motion for that?
Yeah, we should do a motion.
Okay, if someone will make a motion, please.
I make a motion, we remove item four B from the agenda this evening.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Alright, thank you. So now it's our time for all comments from the public. Sienna is going to put a number on the screen for people to call in and join us. We'll give it a few seconds while we're. Wait for a couple of minutes for somebody to figure out how to do all that. The part I missed, actually hearing people, seeing people, doing all the things. Alright, if you miss this opportunity and you do get in in a couple of minutes, just go ahead and stay on the line. Sienna will let us know that someone is on the phone that wants to address the council. So with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. We have thirteen items. We have city council minutes, administrative, department, monthly reports, and monthly reports for the community development department, finance, parks and rec, public, police department, public works, river lodge, report of disbursements, a supplemental budget request for police department for purchase of ballistics vests and equipment, approval of a contract with a playa line for minor street striping maintenance repair project, approval of a contract with Mercer Fraser Company for a minor street paving maintenance and repair project, and approval of a contract with DCI Builders for a minor concrete maintenance and repair project. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I'd like to pull item three to get.
Anyone else?
I'd like to pull item ten, just for some questions.
And I am pulling item thirteen, just so that when someone makes a motion, one through twelve, and we'll approve that, and then thirteen, do it separately, because I'm going to abstain from that one since when construction did submit a bid. So Mike, pulled item three, what do you got?
Yeah, actually, what I'm interested in is in her report, she talks about some nuisance abatements, specifically the ones I'm interested in. If I can get an update, if possible, on the Ronerville Road and Acacia nuisance abatements.
Sure, I could provide that for you quickly, and our city attorney may have more to weigh in, but the nuisance abatement has been completed at twenty-three eighty-six Acacia, and our police have been doing routine patrols to make sure that nobody else occupies that house and creates more of a nuisance. As you may recall, after our initial cleanup, we had some reoccupation of the house despite a red tag. We had a secondary cleanup, we had to go in, but I think at this point that we're patrolling it. I know we did have a call for service up there, and I believe our police handled that situation. And as far as the Ronerville Road nuisance abatement on the thirteen hundred block, we have initiated action there, and there has been an inspection, a reinspection warrant, an abatement warrant, and right now, we're in the process of tagging vehicles and notifying the registered owners of removal, and we anticipate within the coming days proceeding with the abatement activities at that site.
Thank you.
Alright, Jeremy, number ten.
Item ten, I was just curious to know about, like, I saw the request for the eight thousand, but I didn't know how much was in asset forfeiture altogether, if that's anything I'm supposed to know.
Yeah, so if you look at the bottom of the staff report, there's approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars in there, and so this is a small amount. We had higher than normal costs this year for additional ballistics equipment. And so this was from our police chief. He requested that we add funds above what we had budgeted to account for our two new officers that we have to outfit and our chief. So, and that we pull that entire amount that's spent this year from asset forfeiture, because it is eligible rather than the Fund One Hundred general funds. Chief Day may have more to add, if that didn't answer your question. Do you want to know specifically about the equipment or the costs?
No, it was more about making sure we were going to deplete that. I'm sorry, I missed three, I missed, didn't see that part of the report. My apologies.
Yeah, and there is one expenditure, if you note in the staff report, that we anticipated rolling over. I'm not able to get on the server, but we called the amount was a hundred and forty-five or a hundred and forty-six thousand for radio upgrades, so we do expect to use that, but that would still leave over a hundred thousand dollars remaining in the asset forfeiture account.
Yes, one forty-five is correct.
Alright, if there are no other questions, if somebody could make a motion to approve items one through twelve.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through twelve, the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
And if someone can make a motion to approve item thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve item thirteen.
Second the motion.
Alright, we have a motion in a second for consent item number thirteen. Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
And Mayor Long.
Abstain. Alright, our city council business, we have council review and discussion of Parks and Recreation Commission application and mayor's appointment of seat.
Yeah, I think Mayor Long, you could probably proceed with this, I imagine, without a staff report, but just a few things. Our Parks and Recreation Parks and Recreation Commission consists of five seat. One seat has remained vacant because we have not have an applicant. We have a new application from Sherry Jewett for the open seat on the commission, and it is the mayor's recommendation that the council appoint Ms. Jewett to the position, and the appointment would be for a three-year term that would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And so I believe that's the item that we have and what the council's decision is tonight. Hand it back to you, Mayor Long, with that.
I did get to chat with Sherry, and she was disappointed that she wasn't on our Zoom meeting tonight, but she had another meeting. She called me kind of frantic because she forgot about the other one when I told her when this one was, and I said, you don't have to be there. Sometimes it's nice to see a face, but everybody probably knows you. It's all fine, you're still going to get appointed, so I think she will do a good job, and she seemed pretty excited. She recently retired, and so I think having something for her to do to serve the city would be helpful, so. We are supposed to open public comment, so consider it open, and if anyone has any other comments or questions, I'll take those now while we wait to see if anyone calls. Seeing no indication that anyone is calling us, we need a motion to approve the mayor's appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson. Council, did you, Councilmember Johnson?
Frozen.
There he is. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Welcome, Sherry, to the Parks and Recreation, and we appreciate your service. Alright, our next item is authorization to award construction contract for the twenty-twenty citywide storm drain maintenance project to RAO Construction Company, Inc. Staff report, please.
So that is staff's recommendation to authorize a city manager to award the storm drain project to RAO Construction and establish a maximum contract amount of seventy-five thousand. The twenty, we're calling it the twenty-twenty citywide storm drain maintenance project. It includes two culvert replacements, one on Ninth Street and one on Christian, at the intersection of Christian Ridge Road and the intersection, and one on Hillside Drive. The project in Ninth Street includes replacing a failing cast-in-place concrete box culvert, which currently has caused some localized sinkholes. Staff is working on securing a temporary construction easement and a permanent drainage easement at that site. The project at Hillside Drive includes a replacement of failed coordinated metal pipe with a high-density polyethylene pipe, and this location is fully within the city right of way. And what this is, we've had a number of these projects using funding from Measure E. Every year, we've had storm drains failing, and so we're calling it the twenty-twenty storm drain maintenance project, but really what it is, is the two most recent ones that have failed that were, you know, we're not having to do a maintenance emergency, we're doing them as a bid project, and that's why we're proceeding with them, because we do have the time to go through the full competitive bidding process. The project bid package was publicly advertised on August twenty-seventh. The bid period ended on September eleventh. The city received four responsive bids. The apparent low bid was submitted by RAO Construction with a total bid of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Staff has reviewed the license and licenses of RAO Construction. They were found to be responsive and have the necessary license and registrations. Therefore, staff is recommending award of the project to RAO Construction. If the contract is awarded, construction is anticipated to begin with the final week of September and take approximately two weeks. And staff will be working with the property owners to secure the necessary easement for the drainage pipe along Ninth Street. The city has fifty thousand dollars budgeted in Fund One-O-One. This is Measure E for storm drain maintenance, which alone is not enough to complete the project. Staff did not spend all the money dedicated by Measure E last year for storm drain maintenance, which was the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred. And so the SBR would essentially roll that money that went unspent from last year into the current fiscal year, and would bring the total amount of funding up to eighty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. This would provide the amount necessary for the construction contract, which again is sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty, and allow for a thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollar contingency. It's anticipated about six thousand of that will be needed to obtain an easement for the storm drain. The supplemental budget request is attached to the staff report. And with that, that concludes my staff report, and again, staff is recommending that council authorize the city manager to award the twenty-twenty citywide storm drain maintenance project to RAO Construction and establish a maximum contract amount of seventy-five thousand.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Don't you have to open public comment?
You, I just, we'll do that. And Sienna, if one of these goes by, just get our attention.
You got it.
Because it feels weird to just sit here for three minutes doing nothing. Close public comment, and now we need a motion.
Make a motion, we authorize the city manager to award the twenty-twenty citywide storm drain maintenance project to RAO Construction Company Incorporated and establish a maximum contract amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the contract and other related documents.
Second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to our next item, approved contract for architectural services to develop building plans for remodel of city property at twenty-six hundred Newburgh Road for the purpose of interim police facility. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. So staff is requesting that the council authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve a final contract for architectural services with Witcher Engineering to develop building plans for the city-owned building at twenty-six hundred Newburgh Road for the purpose of an interim police facility. I think it's been well documented and brought to the council in the past that the existing police facility is not large enough to meet the needs of the department. There were two studies completed in the past, the most recent one by ELA that documented the space needs of the department and inadequacies of the existing department size. In April twenty twenty, the city purchased a property at twenty-six hundred Newburgh Road for the purpose of the construction of a police facility that would adequately meet the needs of the department. This building is approximately fifty-six hundred square feet, nearly twice the size of the existing police facilities all. The feasibility study completed by ELA included the development of a conceptual design for a police facility with an expansion of the existing building on that parcel into the vacant lot, which the city also purchased. That conceptual design was, would be intended to meet the needs of the city for the next twenty years. However, the cost of that project was over six million dollars and too much for the city's budget. Therefore, staff is pursuing a remodel of the existing building to meet the current needs of the department with the anticipation that an expansion project would occur sometime in the future. A concept drawing that would meet the immediate needs of the department was developed in conjunction with the police department. This plan generally includes a space needs and a potential layout with the existing building footprint, and this would serve as the basis for the design for this current project. Staff issued a request for proposals for building design services on July fourteenth and received one proposal from Witcher Engineering, who partnered with Cleetco, who's done a lot of work for the city in the past. Their original proposed fee was approximately a hundred thousand dollars, and staff reviewed that and identified a number of items that were either not needed, could be completed by city staff, or which the effort can be reduced. The city staff then received a revised proposal with a modified scope of work to complete the project with a proposed fee of fifty-five thousand. Staff would like to finish the negotiations and award a contract to Witcher Engineering for the project subject to the approval, final approval of scope and fee by the city manager. Staff is requesting that the council authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract for services. The police facility remodel project is included in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, an amount of fifty-five thousand, so we do have the funding available and budgeted. And it's anticipated that those design services would be finished within the current fiscal year. What we really hope to get out of this project is remodel plans in a cost estimate and plans that are suitable so that we can finalize and get a building permit for the remodel of that building. So with that, that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the council has any. And we do have Chief Day and Lieutenant Everhart here, who could answer questions regarding the facility as well.
Does anyone have any questions? No?
Got a lot of mine answered when I took the tour.
Jeremy does, Jeremy has questions.
Jeremy?
Sorry, I couldn't get the mute to come off. So is this, the design that you're proposing that Witcher puts together is the feedback from that committee that was created with your, the officers and the, and you, Merritt?
Yeah, so Chief Downey really started this, working with the department, and I looked at it too, and, you know, I'm really happy with what our department did, is they looked at that existing building, and I think, you know, they said, hey, this is twice as big as what we've got now, you know, in the absence of something that we can, you know, afford that would meet the long-term needs of the city. What can we do? And so our police department really came together with kind of a conceptual sketch, and I provided that to our architect to say, look, you know, this, so what can we do within the existing footprint, assuming that it'd be, you know, we could have a significant amount of cost savings, and then double the space that our police have now, and they felt like we could occupy a floor plan that, you know, we could develop a new floor plan within that existing footprint that would meet their needs. So it would include removing the pool, a very small pop out in the corner where the building's in regular shape, but essentially removing the pool and all that equipment, and then just doing interior building remodels, and then identifying the fixtures and furnitures that would be necessary. There's some heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and other controls, and a little bit of structural engineering that would have to happen, but essentially, it's just a remodel of that existing building. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Excited to see them, you know, figure all that out, put it together inside the existing footprint. That's neat.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think the real key to this project is that we need to come up with that cost estimate, and I'm pretty confident that this team will be able to give us a reliable cost estimate, you know, and that we can get to a level that's affordable to meet the immediate needs of our department.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions or comments? While you're thinking about that, we'll open for public comment. Seeing no phones ringing or no signals from Sienna, we'll close public comment. Move on to a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for architectural services with Witcher Engineering to develop building plans for the remodel of the property at twenty-six hundred Newburgh Road for the purpose of an interim police facility for an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars.
I will second that.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Councilmember Glazer.
Well, since I made the motion, I got to vote yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, it's introduction of reading of administrative citation ordinance number twenty twenty dash seven forty-five, providing for administrative fines.
So Mayor Long, our city attorney, we've been finding the staff report, but I just want to say that this is something that staff requested the city attorney to work on, so that we could issue administrative citations for violations of the city's municipal code, rather than by prosecution through the courts. We think this is better for our citizens, and hopefully, we can include mechanisms that will discourage, you know, repeat offenders and the effort that we'd have to take if it went through, if it went through prosecution. So with that, I'll hand it over to our city attorney, Ryan Plots.
Thanks, Merritt. So administrative citation is something the city can already have in its municipal code. It's essentially a traffic ticket for violations of our ordinance that don't have to be appealed through the courts. In fact, if the person who receives the citation wants to appeal it, the appeal is heard by the city manager or his designee. So it does provide the city a non-criminal option to enforce violations of the, not only our zoning ordinance, property maintenance, but business licenses, or any other violation of the fourteen municipal code can be met with a citation. As I indicated in the staff report and in the ordinance, the council has limited discretion to set the amount of the fine for violations that are designated in our code as infractions. The California Government Code provides that the maximum fine for these types of offenses is a hundred dollars for a first violation, two hundred for a second violation of the same ordinance within the same year, and five hundred for each additional violation of the same ordinance within the year. There are, and ordinance does allow for increased fines for violations relating to building codes, and those are in ordinance, and those escalate more quickly than the general fine. Those are a hundred and thirty for a first violation, seven hundred for a second, and a one thousand, three hundred for each additional violation within the same year. So again, that would provide our code compliance official and our building inspector additional flexibility to issue fines in order to encourage compliance. The ordinance sets forth a procedure by which fines can be appealed. It allows for, the appeal process requires an advanced deposit of the fine, but there's a provision for hardship labors for those who can't afford to pay the fine prior to the appeal process. And it provides late payment penalty of ten percent interest. It allows recovery through any legal means, but for citations that relate to real property conditions, it also allows the city to record a special assessment due for the amount of the fine. And it does allow for judicial review by filing a petition for writ of mandate following the exhaustion of the administrative appeal process. If, one thing I forgot to mention with respect to the fine amount is that the government code limits the fines for those items deemed infractions, but for violations of the municipal code that are currently classified as misdemeanors, or maybe classified as misdemeanors in the future, the council has discretion to set the amounts of fines, and we're not limited by the maximum fine set forth in the government code. So as we implement this administrative fine process, we'll work to identify violations that are currently labeled infractions and make recommendations to the council as to whether we want to upgrade those to misdemeanors to allow us to have discretion with respect to the administrative fines. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Alright, let's go ahead. While we are asking our own questions, and then that way, if anyone wants to call in, they can, while we're having our discussion, it'll move things along a little faster. So, council, do we have questions?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If somebody supposedly, okay, starts doing some work on their house, and the building inspector comes out, will they give them a warning and tell them they need a permit, or will they just come out and write them a fine?
That's a good question. So with respect to violations of the building codes or property maintenance codes, the ordinance actually requires that the citing official provide them a reasonable period of time to correct violation before the fine will be imposed. And so if, you know, our building inspector went out and somebody was constructing an addition without a permit, in addition to a stop work order, he could start the administrative fine process and give them, you know, a reasonable amount of time to complete that work. I would note that the ordinance does provide that if the building condition is relates to the cultivation of commercial cannabis, the fine can be imposed immediately without the need to first allow for correction.
Thank you.
Alright, hearing no public, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Does any other council member have questions?
I have a question about the fines related to one hundred, two hundred, and five hundred. What kind of, can you give me an example of what kind of offenses those would be, like, okay, I'm in real estate, so if I put up a open house sign in, on a corner with an arrow pointing at the direction of my listing, is that a, is that a finable offense?
Yeah, so the administrative fines are available for any violation of our municipal code that's declared to be an infraction. And there's general provisions in our municipal code that basically declare any violation of an ordinance to be an infraction unless the council designates it to be a misdemeanor. So the short answer to your question is, if that's unlawful by the municipal code, then a citation could be given for that offense. Now, you know, with respect, there's always prosecutorial discretion that, you know, our code enforcement officials and our law enforcement use on a day-to-day basis. You know, people are incited for jaywalking and things of that nature, and so we would, that would continue, but technically, yes.
What other types of those offenses? I mean, I'm just, without reading the municipal code, I'm not sure what all of our ordinances say.
Sure, and there's quite a bit of them, but, you know, the basic categories would be your your building code, electrical code, plumbing code, business licenses, health and safety provisions, cannabis regulations, land use and commercial uses. So for example, if a property is being used in a manner inconsistent with our zoning ordinance. So for example, if, if a, if a property is being used in a manner inconsistent with our zoning ordinance, that would be citable as an administrative citation. So really, anything that the city regulates or prospcribes could be met with an administrative citation. I would note it's an optional remedy. The city has the discretion not to cite it or to bring criminal charges depending on the election of the citing officer. And so just because we have this option doesn't mean we still couldn't go to court and see criminal sanctions for certain types of violations.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, a couple of things, or Councilmember Stanfield, a couple of things that come to mind for me is, you know, where we've had illegal sewer discharges and violation of municipal code, or, you know, we also have a new short-term rental ordinance, things like that. And I guess I see the city taking an approach very much like we've done with the nuisance abatement, which we routinely work with folks who end up violating the municipal code. And, and we first try to get compliance voluntarily, and we're usually pretty successful with that. And so I think these violations and fines would come more where we can't be successful with people to, you know, correct the, the violation themselves. And very, you know, I, I can't think of an instance where we've not tried to work with somebody. And as, as our city attorney mentioned, these are appealable to the council. So ultimately, if somebody was really unhappy with the decision by the city manager administrative hearing, they could appeal it to the council and get a council decision.
Okay.
Ryan, who has the authority to write, write these fines?
Any, any employee of the city with enforcement authority. So that would be Wayne Hanson as our code compliance officer, an officer of the police department.
And the building officials as well?
Correct, yes, thank you.
Any other? Person that oversees the stormwater permits also is an enforcement officer who has a right of entry powers to enter property to correct or alleviate a stormwater discharge, pollution discharge to waters of the creek or the river, or something along those lines.
Yeah, that's a good point. And, and the definition of the, the code compliance administrator for purposes of this ordinance is intentionally broad. It says, for purposes of this chapter, a code compliance administrator shall mean any city employee or agent of the city with authority to enforce any provision of this code, including but not limited to the city manager, code compliance officer, and officers of the Fortuna Police Department. So it, it would include, you know, as you've mentioned, Councilman Johnson, those employees too, without authority.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to hold the first reading of ordinance 2020-745 and read by title only.
Second the motion.
Siana, we have a motion in a second.
Ordinance 2020-745, an ordinance of the City of Fortuna, adding chapter 1.09 to Title 1 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to provide for the imposition of administrative fines and penalties and administrative procedures to govern the imposition, enforcement, collection, and administrative review by the City of administrative fines and penalties. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. Our next item is introduction and first reading of ordinance 2020-746, providing for administrative fines for violations of the ordinance regulating cannabis. Staff report, please.
Our attorney also has this, our city attorney also has a staff report, but this is, is one that will be enabled by the previous administrative violations and one that we will, that we were seeking to address. So with that, I'll hand it over to our city attorney for staff report.
Merritt, and, and this is an example of a violation of our municipal code that is a misdemeanor. And therefore, the council has the discretion to set the level of fines in, in addition to or in excess of the minimums in the government code. And so you'll see this is a minor amendment to our existing cannabis regulation, which are set out in section 17.06.120.5 of the municipal code. This ordinance simply adds to the remedies provision that each violation of this, the cannabis regulations is citable in the amount of $1,000 per day that the violation continues. It provides that the fines will be assessed under the new chapter 1.09 that we just conducted the first reading of. And it expressly states that any person that is found to have violated this section is guilty of a misdemeanor. And so with that, that concludes my staff report, and I'll happy to answer any questions.
And Mayor, Mayor Long, if I could just add, you know, one more comment. We have had a number of instances where we've had illegal cultivation in commercial sites within the city. And unfortunately, at some of those, we'd have, we've had to visit those more than one time. And so this was really intended to disturb as, as, as a way to disincentivize people from just continuing even after they've been warned and approached by our police. So what I, you know, what we were trying to solve here is our police having to go out to the same place over and over again. And it was our feeling that being able to put a higher fine there would dissuade people from engaging in that activity and violation of the city's municipal code.
Let's do the same thing. Let's go ahead and open public comment while the council asks questions and makes their comments as well. Does anyone from the council have comments or questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is Dean. If, if, if we do this and it's, it's an effort of, an attempt to try to convince people that are breaking the law to cease and desist. But if it appears after six months or a year's worth of application and it doesn't deter these people from doing it, do we have the discretion to come back and readjust the, the fine to a larger amount?
Yes, and the, the increased fine would be effective prospectively. So it wouldn't retroactively apply the fines that have already been imposed, but going forward, it certainly would.
Great, okay. So hopefully, this will have, it'll be.
We've lost you, Dean. You're frozen. Let's go ahead and close public comment while we're waiting for Dean to get his audio fixed. Now he's wrong.
Facilitate that. He's better. Side曲
I have a question.
Jeremy?
In charge of monitoring the collection of these fines and do we send them out to collection, like a collection service after so many ti, so many, so much time on the books where they haven't paid? Or is that where we go to court and, like, put a lien again? I don't know. I mean, that seems like, it says no fiscal impact, but somebody's gonna have to monitor all that.
Well, the, the fines are collectible through court action. For real property-related fines, they're collectible through a special assessment lien. The city would have the discretion to, you know, send these to collection because they would be a civil debt of the city and not a criminal debt. So those are the collection efforts that we would have at our school.
So would the, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna note that the majority of these court actions would be small claims actions that would be dealt with by staff rather expeditiously. If we get above the small claims limit, which I believe is $6,000 now, thereabouts, it would be a, a limited civil case that would be, you know, your typical civil trial, civil case with a, with a trial.
So with small claims, would that be the city manager?
It'd be the city manager or his designated.
Oh, so it could be you.
No, unfortunately, attorneys cannot appear in small claims unless we're the party or the party. So it would, it would be city staff.
So the fines would be collected by the clerk?
I assume so, yes.
Okay. That's for both, that's this last ordinance and this one?
Correct, same process.
Thanks.
Is the, are we allowed to, like the courts do, add a administrative fee to cover costs?
The ordinance allows for cost recovery as part of the judgment.
I thought I saw that in there, but I figured you were here, I'd just ask.
Any other questions?
This, just sorry, one question from the staff side that might help clarify. So if somebody was issued a fine, they would theoretically be sent an invoice either by the city clerk or from our finance direct, our finance department. And they would either pay that fine or contest, you know, if they didn't pay that fine, then the remedy that you talked about would be small claims court, if they failed to collect, not going to collections.
Correct. Yes, and, and again, if, if it's real property-related, then we could just go straight to a special assessment lien that would either get paid at sale or at the next year's tax collections from the county.
And would that require that first and second reading type of maneuver?
Yes.
Okay.
Much the same as the weed abatement process?
Yeah, well, with respect to the first and second reading, you know, I was talking about the implementation of this ordinance. You know, with respect to taking enforcement action, that would be, that would be made at the staff level.
Well, I was just thinking of the, the weed abatement ordinance allows collection through the tax assessor. At one time, it was a special assessment-only recovery both on sale of the property or transfer, but then it became a tax lien. So it'd be much the same as that then.
That's correct. And, and that would only relate to real property-related citations. Personal conduct couldn't be done that way.
Right.
If they were growing on their property, would that be considered?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Councilmember Glazer, you're muted.
I'm back. If, if let's propose somebody's renting a facility, doesn't own it, but is renting it, and they are caught violating the letter of the law, the ordinance, we fine them, but unfortunately, they can easily just pick up and leave. So the, the effort to try to have a $1,000 fine might just completely fall away and not accomplish anything. So if, if it was an illegal grow and it violates our ordinance, why aren't we contacting the drug task force and having them come in and bust them?
We certainly would do that, I, I believe as well, and the chief can weigh in on that. With respect to the fine, the, the fine could be responsibility of the landlord. And the landlord is made aware through the assessment and, and recordation of the lien process that his or her tenants are growing on the property and subjecting the landlords to fines. Hopefully, the landlord would take action. We could also cite the tenants too. So there'd be a citation to the landowner and a citation to the tenants. Now, of course, with the tenants, we'd probably be chasing them for payment of fines, and we may never see it, even if we get a court judgment. But hopefully, the landlord can enforce compliance when made aware that his tenants are, you know, racking up fines on his or her behalf.
One, but, one thing for everybody to keep in mind here is that the traditional reliance on the criminal justice system as so far as cannabis violations are concerned, it's no longer, you know, really the reality or realistic expectation. This is what gives municipalities the authority when regulations are codified to follow through and have some sort of impact. Now, in the case, Councilmember Glacier, where, you know, somebody packs up and moves away, city attorney's right, we go after the owner. But, you know, if they move away, that's also a problem solved. The, the bottom line is we don't want it in the community. So if we are dissuading people in that way, we're still accomplishing, you know, kind of our end result or, or the goal that we're all after. So I would just say, you know, that's due to, all of this is due to decriminalization in California of, you know, a lot of the laws, including those that deal with controlled substances or narcotics. And, and again, this is just something that actually gives us, you know, some, some impact with the regulations that council is adopting.
Right, Prop 64 was promoted by Governor Brown, and, and each city had to come up with what they wanted as a mandate. We end up coming up with a $100 cost for a permit, but there were obligations on the grower to comply. The last time I, I haven't asked you, but the last time I asked former Chief Terry, nobody had purchased a permit. And that's been like a year and a half. So the, the people are pretty much thumbing their nose up to us. So I'm, I'm, rather than trying to beat this to death and extrapolate it into it, I'd, it would be fun to find out and see how successful the attention-getting $1,000 a day fine is. And then we can adapt it accordingly afterwards.
Yes, sir. And, and my understanding, that was one point that I checked on the other day. To date, it's my understanding, and, and, and I, I am under the impression that I'm correct here, but that a perm, a single permit has still not been obtained, so.
Right, right. Thank you very much.
I have one more question. I have a little bit of a problem with finding a landlord. If somebody's renting a house and the landlord has no idea that they're growing in that house and they're notified, it takes a while to evict them. I don't, wouldn't want them to be getting a $1,000 a day fine on top of that when there's really not anything they can do except go through the eviction process.
That, that's a good point. And in chapter 1.09 of the ordinance that we took up immediately before this, there is some relief to landlords who, who are cited for cannabis and they weren't aware. And so I'm just going to that provision of the ordinance so that I can summarize it for you. But as I mentioned, with real property-related crimes that have to do with cannabis, the code compliance officer does not have to provide an opportunity to cure. But when it is a tenant-occupied building, section 1.09.030 subdivision F provides an exception to that for, for landlords. And it provides that for any violation for which the immediate imposition of fines or penalties is allowable, the code compliance administrator shall provide a reasonable period of time for the correction or remedy of the violation prior to the imposition of fines or penalties if all of the following are true. One, a tenant is in possession of the property that is the subject of the administrative action. The rental property owner or agent can establish that the rental or lease agreement prohibits the cultivation of cannabis. Three, the rental property owner or agent establishes that he or she did not know the tenant was illegally cultivating cannabis, and no complaint, property inspection, or other information caused the rental property owner or agent to have actual notice of illegal cannabis. And four, the rental property owner or agent provides written notice to the code compliance administrator of his or her intent to invoke this subsection and submits the necessary documentation within five days of the citation. So again, that is some relief to an unknown landlord who suddenly sees $1,000 a day fines rack up. In this instance, after the first site, the landlord has the ability to obtain a reasonable period to cure the violation, meaning get his tenants to stop doing this before the fines start accumulating.
And, and what if the tenants don't stop and the person has to start an eviction process? That sometimes takes a while. They're not gonna get a fine while they're waiting for that, are they?
Yes, so as part of that process, if the landlord invokes this protection, the landlord will work with the code compliance officer to determine how much time is reasonable for the violation to be cured. And as part of that, and as part of working with the landlord, the code compliance officer can follow up to make sure the three-day notice to terminate was served and can follow up to make sure the unlawful detainee was quickly served. And so long as the landlord is working with due diligence to correct the violation, then that would be encompassed within the reasonable period of cure before the fines begin to be imposed.
Okay, thank you.
Council, council? Council, Council Mayor Pro Tem Trent, again, the problem we're trying to solve is having our officers go out repeatedly to the same location and, and tell the people to remove their equipment and cure the situation. And we felt like there just wasn't enough of a disincentive for that activity without some higher fines. You know, a fine of a hundred dollars frankly wasn't motivating people to, to move on and stop that activity.
We did bring that up, and we actually put this into process, that a hundred dollar fine is nothing, you know, they're not going to think a thing about that compared to what the plants are worth. So I agree with the, the bigger fines.
Did they ever actually have anybody pay the hundred dollars a day for getting told not to have it there?
No, we really haven't pursued that. You know, I think our detectives investigating, we're, we're just trying to get voluntary compliance. And, you know, I really don't think unless it was a really, you know, people were resistant about not moving it, you know, it's just not worth it. You know, we just had, it continued to take more and more time from our detectives to try to get people to move on and say, hey, look, we're aware of it. And it becomes a lot of work for something that's, you know, not considered as much of a criminal activity. And that's probably not our technical law enforcement term, but you know, you just don't arrest people, and the DA is not going to prosecute people for that in this day and age. And so really, what we want is just voluntary compliance.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just say traditionally, the punitive consequences such as this do actually work. And again, in regards to the specific landlords, traditionally, you know, we understand as far as the discretionary and the due, due process, due diligence issues that, you know, we're not trying to go after or punish any type of landlord or landlord that doesn't know what's going on or that is taking the appropriate steps to, you know, disposition the problem. This is for offenders who are educated and aware of the regulations, renting property or owning property who are, you know, covertly cultivating and growing marijuana against the city council's adopted regulations. So on that, I would submit.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion. We hold the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash seven forty-six and read by title only.
Second the motion. Oh, you can second it, alter it.
All right, Sienna, we have a motion and a second.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash seven four six in ordinance of the city of Fortuna, amending section one seven point zero six point one two zero point five of chapter seventeen point zero six to title seventeen of the Fortuna municipal code to provide for the imposition of administrative fines for violations. Councilmember Glazer?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is a discussion item to whether or not to resume council meetings in person at City Hall. Is someone going to lead this discussion, or what are we thinking, Merritt?
You know, I think that was a request from, from, I believe, councilmember Glazer at the last council meeting. And really, I guess staff has a couple of different perspectives on this. One is that, you know, council wants to resume, we can resume office activities under our reopening plan. We'd have to follow the guidelines, you know, we'd have to have spacing as we can, as spacing to comply with the public health guidelines, and there'd have to be use of wearing masks, and we still can't have the meetings open to the public. So I guess staff is really just looking from, direction from council. If the council wants to hold meetings in public, I, excuse me, hold meetings in person, it would just be the council present at council chambers, wearing masks, and then the public would still have to be remote via Zoom or, or other remote call, or call in like, like we have now.
I have no desire to meet in person if our public can't be there. Not if we have to wear a mask. My voice doesn't carry, and you put a mask on, and it's just going to be like, it's going to be bad. What's everybody else think? Obviously, somebody wanted to do this because it's on here.
Well, I'm, I'm the one that, I'm, I'm getting burned out doing Zooms. And sometimes, sometimes the technology of the Zoom hookups isn't really not advantageous. We, we are going to have a couple of controversial topics that are going to need to somehow have a better opportunity for the public, however we can do it, to be able to be participating, even if, even if the Dr. Frankovich can somehow adapt or tweak, because, because the Eureka Council did have a live meeting, and that was a couple of months ago. So if they did it, whether they did it and got caught, but I know they did it, and it seemed as though it was very applicable, they ended up having six foot across the, the dais, because there were only four of them. I, I just, we're shortchanging the public with being a little more open and professional and receptive. The Zoom is just cut and dry. We don't care who you are. You know, you may have an opinion, but it's just too impersonal. And yeah, you know, I have a loud voice, so no matter what the mask is, it's not going to deter me because I'm going to have the microphone stuffed in my mouth, so people will be able to hear me. They do make nice, nice plastic flip up, flip down face shields that if we're six feet away, I think the plastic face shield should be very applicable. You wouldn't even have to have one of those gauze masks across your mouth, so you'd be able to talk just fine. I'm, I'm an advocate of going back to where that we used to be, at least make an effort to try to take a, take a small step in that direction, rather than be willing to be squashed down by, by the Department of Health and Human Services. And we don't really have any say to adapt. So I'm, I'm an adv, I'm an advocate. Nothing prevents people from calling in sick. They don't want to talk with a mask on, but, but I'm not saying that should be our option.
The problem is, we still don't get to have our public. So even if we're all sitting in the council chamber, we still don't get to have anyone come in and talk to us.
There should be a way of having people isolated, like you were doing deposition. And you come in one, one person at a time, come to the, come to the podium, the podium's isolated far enough away from everybody, and they can talk. There just has to be a way to make this work. I would, I would at least, I would at least embrace talking to Dr. Frankovich and see if she wants to lift this. She's, she's enemy number one by everybody. She wants to be able to make everybody get back to the manner that we used to be. I, I would like to at least have an effort by staff, city manager to talk to her and say, okay, this is what we would like to do. Are there specific mandates? Or is still a shutdown, and then have an answer next meeting?
Hey, I was all for just doing it.
Well, let, let me just say, I understand the council's desire, you know, and staff, you know, we, we would love to get back to the normal meetings, and we will look into it to see what we can do. But Mike, right now, my understanding is that a minimum that we'd have to have the masks. And I know Mayor Long, you've been, you know, would struggle with that and, and being heard and the communication challenges there. And then the second half is, half is, can we have the public there, whether it's one at a time? You know, I know there can't be gatherings of people. I think it's in excess of ten people, but we will look into it if there is a way. You know, I, right now, I think that's outside of what the public health order allows. But, you know, the question is, would, you know, would the council want to meet wearing, wearing masks? And I, I think I'm hearing the answer to that be no. And then, you know, if we can have the public, I'll look into that and, and let the council know if it was one at a time. But I, I think we're prohibited from having gatherings and having one at a time. I don't know if it fulfill what the council wants to see, but we'll continue to talk to public health and see if there is a way. We can review what the city of Eureka did. I don't think they're having public meetings with the public there in person, but I, I would double check that. And, you know, so I'd accept direction from the council of which, which way you want to go.
I would rather do what we're doing right now than, I mean, because it would be no different to the public except, you know, because they would still be watching it on TV, except we'd have it on. And it would be harder to hear what we're saying. So I would just assume, do it this way until we can go back to our full meetings with public in the chambers.
That may be next summer or fall.
And maybe twenty twenty-two.
Possibly.
Well, and, you know, I, I, I don't think, you know, staff doesn't like it. We have a number of pretty big items that are coming up that we really want to hear from the public. And, you know, I think we need to continue to find what, better ways to get the public involved. You know, for example, tonight, we really didn't have any public comment. And I would have to think if we were here in person with a live audience, we would see some comments. So I, you know, I think it's a casualty of the coronavirus situation, not something that the city wants, certainly not the council and not staff. So, you know, we can continue to look into ways to better get public involved. I think it's just a, a challenge with the technology platform that we're, we're using and with, with little alternative.
Well, I made an attempt. That's all I could say is I made a shot, shot into the sky, just a thing.
We heard you.
You know, I just, I'm ready to just open up everything. If someone doesn't want to come to our meeting, they don't have to come to our meeting. It's just that simple.
Yeah.
So, yes, very frustrating.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I like the heart behind it, but I have to agree on the rational side of things. I don't think that if we can't have the public, then there's no point in wearing masks and being in a room by ourselves. I was going to also ask the city clerk if she'd be able to maintain Brown Act compliance if it was one, it was, if it was no public, where this can still be publicized.
Well, I actually spoke with the city attorney about this last week, I, in anticipation of this discussion. And, you know, when it first came up, I thought that we could create a platform by which the public could enter City Hall, and we could queue them in such a way to maintain social distancing, six feet, allow one person to come to the podium at a time. And what Ryan pointed out to me was that in addition to that, we would still have to maintain some type of media platform by which members of the public who might not be comfortable coming into a setting like one at City Hall could still participate. So we could potentially meet the Brown Act requirements and allow public access kind of the way we did, you know, before COVID, but we would still have to have that alternative platform. And we have used a phone in the past that proves to be very cumbersome during a live meeting. Someone calls in, maybe they're watching on TV, it's not quite in real time. And, you know, the timing of a public comment can be disruptive to the flow of a meeting that's taking place in person. So that's a concern. We can look into some other platforms. You know, Zoom offers another type of conference platform where maybe we can have a computer set up in here that takes in the entire meeting. I mean, there are things that we can look into, but in the moment, and Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, to, to meet the Brown Act requirements, even if we were to have members of the public, if we were to allow members of the public, we'd still have to allow this other type of platform for people to be able to call in or use some type of web or media based conferencing.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's correct. And because of the health orders, we could, we have to have limited entry, which means in order for the public to fully participate, there'd have to be some teleconferencing or video conferencing available to those that aren't in the council chambers at that particular moment. The way other jurisdictions are doing it, and I, I know the city of Reading and the county of Shasta have both opened. What they're doing is the members of the council or the board of supervisors are in chambers, and they allow the public to gather in a waiting room with social distancing. And you sign up to give public comment on a particular agenda item. When that agenda item is called, they let anywhere from one to four people in the room. They provide their public comment, and then they leave. And then the next four come in, provide their public comment, and leave. But they still are encouraging everyone to participate via video conference or phone conference just because of the burdens of having people gather, bringing them in one at a time. It's just easier to encourage people to use the technology to participate still.
Any other comments?
Just that, you know, staff is really anxious. We have a few items that we really wanted to have vigorous public debate. Some coming up, you know, we'll have a renewal, renewal of our franchise agreement where, you know, for, for solid waste and recycling. And we really want to hear from the public, so we've kind of been holding off on that one. We had a cannabis workshop to look at rewriting the city's ordinance on the cannabis prohibition. We've had a lot of, we had a lot of interest in that. But again, we, we had a workshop plan that we postponed it when the coronavirus broke out. There's a number of items that we really want to see input from the public in a way that we haven't been getting on these Zoom platforms. So we've been holding off in anticipation that we can, that we'll receive, you know, we'll be able to meet again in person and have the, the public there live at a workshop or a council meeting. So soon, we're not going to, you know, we can't put all of these items off, and we, we need to bring those soon. And so again, we're just going to have to really work to get a better means for, for public input and participation. And right now, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a great solution, other than kind of what we've been doing, which is working. But again, we're not seeing people participate in the numbers that we did before.
All right. If there are any more comments, we'll move on to city manager's report, Merritt.
Okay, our next, I'll start with the upcoming meeting dates and times. Our next city council meeting is October 5th at six o'clock PM. Our next planning commission meeting is at September 27th, also at, excuse me, September 22nd tomorrow, also at six o'clock PM. Our next measuree meeting is December 15th, 5:30 PM. And our next Rona Community Recreation Park District meeting is October 7th. I have a few items from my verbal report, reporting on the number of the infrastructure projects the city is working on. The Jameson Creek Culvert project, which has forced the closure of Rona Ville Road, is approximately eighty percent complete. There's some delays due to the need for shoring that were not originally anticipated to support the slopes, so the end wall could be poured of that culvert. We anticipate, we expect to be able to return the channel to the culvert on October 19th, and then backfilling and opening the roadway by the end of October. Again, we appreciate the public's patience with this road closure. We're reassessing the schedule weekly and trying to identify ways that we can accelerate the schedule. Right now, it's a very small area. We have, we can't just throw more equipment at it. Essentially, we're, you know, the, more equipment can't work in that small space, but we're, we're trying to do what we can to get that back open. And right now, we're, 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 we're looking at a schedule of the end of October. The South Fortuna Elementary School Safe Routes to School project is complete with, with the exception of some minor punchless items. The project was completed on schedule and is anticipated to be within the budget, so no overruns on that project. And again, that was a, a grant funded project with a very small match with the city of Fortuna, and the grant funds were over eight hundred thousand dollars on that project. Similarly, the Highway Safety Improvement Program project is complete. That was the light, the, the flashing crossings that were installed throughout the city. We did have some remaining budget, and we added one more flashing crossing at the intersection of Lawndale and Newburgh Road. It, it's a, it's a great addition, and it wasn't included in the Safe Routes to School project, but we were able to use the remaining funds and add another flashing crossing at that location. City staff is in the process of selecting a consultant for the city's wastewater compliance project. This is a large project that would include the design of a new wastewater treatment plant and disposal fields. We conducted interviews and proposal reviews for the consultants who are buying for that project, and we expect bringing a recommendation to the council at the October 5th meeting for awarding that project. And then we opened escrow at the city's, at the city's property at 320 Main Street. And we expect to close on that, our city, another timeline, but I think within this next sixty to ninety days. And that's one that we've been looking to dispose of for quite some time, and, and we'll have to bring that back for the council, for the public at an open session in the near future. And then also just, you know, I was going to provide an update on the, the nuisance abatement on thirteen hundred block, but I did that in, as part of a question earlier on in the meeting, so I won't cover that again. But I, I would just say that we will be proceeding with some abatement activities in the thirteen hundred block of Newburgh Road, and there may be some traffic control as we're trying to get large dumpsters and other equipments in there, equipment in there to be able to remove some of the, the material from that property. So with that, that concludes my staff report. If the council has any questions on those projects or others, I'd be happy to answer them.
You said Newburgh Road, but you actually meant Rona Ville Road, right?
Yeah, the nuisance abatement?
Yes.
Rona Ville Road, thirteen hundred block of Rona Ville Road, 1300 block of Rona Ville Road.
Okay. Thank you, Merritt. Anyone have any questions for Merritt? Seeing none, does anyone have any future agenda items? Hearing none, we'll start with city council reports, Dean.
Thanks so much, Merritt Mayor. As everybody, everybody's been doing the countdown for the upcoming, the upcoming election and the mailing and receipt of ballots. We're about two weeks away. And the unfortunate part about it is that there are some issues on the ballot that need to be talked about. I'd like to superficially go over a couple of them. But at the, the finality of what I'm going to be discussing as the no's on propositions, I have a positive vote in favor of a measure. So the Howard Jarvis, Howard Jarvis group was, was very instrumental in 1979 to put on the ballot, state ballot, a measure, I mean, Proposition 13. Proposition 13 affected, positive note, the businesses as well as residential that froze the assessed value of homes and businesses. Over the last, the last 40 plus years, there's been concerted efforts to attack Prop 13 and to rescind it. And unfortunately, the Attorney General of the State of California is incessant about this, trying to, to cancel it so they could get more money. On this ballot is Proposition 15. And it is a definite no, no one should vote for it. If you're a business owner, I'm sure you're very aware that if the public passes it, you're negatively affected because you're going to have your assessed values increased. If Measure 15, Proposition 15 passes, then the immediate next step is to put on the ballot and to attack residential. I have news for you. There's still a lot of people that own their homes and they are going to be so negatively impacted. It's going to harm them financially and personally. So please, I, I, I beg everybody to pay attention. If you want to replay this, this, this move, this program we're doing tonight for the Zoom, you can go back over. But on the ballot, Proposition 15, no. Proposition 18, no. Proposition 19, no. And Proposition 21, no. These are all recommended voting standards with the Howard Jarvis group. And I really have to thank them for being so aggressive and proactive to try to let the public know what's correct. We also have on the ballot a measure that the, all the council members on the dais that are on, on live right now and the city, we are asking for the public to vote yes on Measure G. And if you can't remember the letter, just remember the first letter in my name and then you won't get confused. Measure G is a request by all of us to vote in favor of extending the expiration date of the three quarters of a cent sales tax that was approved in, in 2016 by the voters. And there is immense amount of importance to having that three quarters of a cent extended. The amount of things that have been accomplished, we'll probably try, if you, if you want to talk to any of us, we'll be able to give you the information and the, and the positive benefit. So please, a lot of, a lot of the business people were against this, but regardless of their negativity, it actually has been beneficial and they have been actually rescinded their negative opinions. So it is something that is a positive for the city of Fortuna. And I'm not going to go on anymore. I just wish everybody well. Securing in place and having to wear a mask has to be some of the worst restraints that we have to be put through. And we've been doing this for eight months. God bless everybody. God bless America. God bless our troops. God bless everybody that's involved. I want our town to be able to, to get past this restrictions. I want our town to be as wonderful as it was in January. So God bless you all.
Thank you, Dean. Mike?
Well, I, I think Dean hit those items pretty well. I've had a historical commission meeting and for everybody, the museum is back open again. It's got some nice exhibits. Lot of Fortuna history, if you have the chance to get in there. Thursday through Sunday, I believe it's noon to five. And there are also during this meeting was discussion, the current project they're working on is a book on the history and to be ready for the 100th anniversary of the Fortuna rodeo. And they have been working diligently on that, getting close to the end. If anybody has any chili cook off pictures, they're looking for that because there seems to be a lack of those. I should have a bunch because I participated and I've taken a lot of pictures, but I think they're all on an external hard drive that I can't access right now. Technology is a wonderful thing, but the pictures will remain safe because I can't get to them. Also had an HCOG board meeting. Some of the highlights from that, that really affect all of us is the safety corridor project. There was today, should have been the first day, working on the mitigation on the Samoa Peninsula to mitigate for the wetland disturbance by Indianola there. And by January 15th of 21, design should be complete for the interchange. And upcoming December CTC meeting, there will be a section where some of the funds that were deferred out of the Humboldt County area, administered by HCOG as a regional transportation planning authority. Some of those funds will be able to be returned. And hopefully at the December CTC meeting, they will be taking that up. On last chance grade, the geotech part is proceeding up there so we can hopefully get rid of some of the traffic signals and flagging that's up there. In the long run, the whole roadway may very well be moved, be much more stable, easier to get going north. They're also developing a working group to figure out which alternative design plan they want to go with. So that'll be happening. And I actually, because it wasn't covered in the last meeting, I wrote some of the items down for Dean because he follows the traffic enforcement and less a safety corridor. And I believe that the winner of the monthly speed contest for August was 85 miles an hour. I mean, that would be July, 85 miles an hour. And unfortunately for some of the citations, we actually had people from Fortuna in there. But I think the 85 was actually a out of town resident. So that was the
Right.
The big one for that.
Good going.
We did not have a report for the last meeting we had in September, which covered August. So, and that is my report for this, for this meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Jeremy?
So Fortuna Business Improvement District added a part-time staff member for help with launching their Humboldt Lodging Alliance grant. FBIT will be kicking off tourism, business relocation, retirement, ad planning next month, which will run up and down the West Coast. FBIT has a new website that's going to be launched in a couple of weeks. And Humboldt County Economic Development Department still has small business COVID restart and recovery grant rounds that are always open. FBIT can help any Fortuna business with that. Also, a couple of highlights in the park and rec report was the park or the, the picnic tables for Runner Park are continuing to be delivered additional, additionally to local restaurants to accommodate outdoor seating. Last month, they prepped the, the rodeo grounds for a Jimcanna, which was approved by the county. So I'm glad to see that our rodeo ground is still being able to use during this time. Skating rink is still closed and they finalized the season for summer fun at the end of, of August. So always a blessing to have that program available. Other than that, I watched Coffee with the Chief this morning, thought they did a great job. And they encourage people to call in with their questions. And I just really appreciate and enjoy that public outreach that they're doing there. I have nothing else to report, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
First of all, I want to thank our local fire department for sending an edge, an engine down to help with the Southern Humboldt Fire to keep it out of Humboldt County and all the other local agencies who sent engines down there. They were successful in putting a fire lineup and keeping it out of Humboldt County down that way. And they're still fighting it up towards Ruth, but that's looking a lot better too. So we just really appreciate all the volunteers and all of the fire departments that have been working on that. And then all the extra people for road closures and all of that. I don't think nobody liked or anybody liked that orange day that we had that was dark all day. It made me realize I never want to live in Alaska. I like that during the day. But that's, that's pretty much all I have to report. I haven't had any meetings, been, you know, busy trying to educate people on the city's tax measure. We have brochures. If anybody's interested, any of that, any, any of those, we're trying to get those out to as much of the community as possible. But as Dean said, you can contact any of us and we can give you a brochure or educate you on what those tax measures have done and how important they are to the city of Fortuna. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. So back in the day when women weren't really included on city councils, there were three women years and years ago, Doris Osborne, Beth Rundell, and Arlene Werner. We lost Doris Osborne on September 2nd. She was one of those. A friend of mine paved the way for the rest of us to be involved in city councils and leadership. On the anniversary of the 100th year of women to be able to vote, a couple of the high school kids sent me little memos to answer for their class, asking, you know, what it meant to be a woman in leadership and to, you know, how we felt about voting and all the things. It was pretty cute and always fun to get. I always love it when I get invited to do things with the high school. I haven't been invited there lately, obviously because of all this craziness. But I was thrilled that they reached out and they wanted some input. So that was kind of cool. Glad to see the schools are opening back up. Parents are so excited. I've got grandkids that just can't wait. And so I'm really glad to see that all the local schools are starting to get their little people back in classrooms. Started walking, handing out flyers for Measure G. We have several walkers this year and I am really appreciative of that. I tried to call, cover a lot of the city myself last time and it was really hard. Mike Johnson has been running crazy, doing a phenomenal job, getting signs to people, getting flyers to people. Scrappers Edge is printing them for us, giving us a good deal on the rates. If anyone wants a sign for their yard, a yes on G sign, please let one of the council members know. We'll make sure you get one. I always forget how rewarding it is to knock on doors. You forget how your people really do want to talk to you and you get to answer questions and they're just excited to see you. And I didn't know how they would be with this whole COVID thing, you know? But they really were just excited and they wanted to chat and they ran to open the door. And I was, you know, going back my six feet and they were following me. So it was like, they just really wanted that interaction. And I think a lot of them were older people who have really been shut in and really been isolated. So it was good to, to get out and talk to them. We've got a lot of ground to cover still and I'm looking forward to it and dreading it at the same time because it's such a big job. But it's really, really an honor to be able to talk to our constituents out there. REDEX still busy giving loans and so that's a good thing. We've had some people want to up their lines of credit and different things to get through COVID, but some of our people like are just really expanding as well. And so in this crazy time, that's really awesome to see that local businesses are expanding. What else? Oh, if you want to follow along with what's happening on Measure G, sorry, I'm going back to that. We have a yes on G Facebook page and as well, I'm sharing things on my Mayor Su Long page. So if you have questions, my phone number is always there. You can call me and a lot of the questions that you might have are going to be answered on those pages. So follow along with us and help us get this passed so that the city can continue offering the wonderful services that we do. So with that, I think we are ready to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
We're all going to hold out. You're in the dark, Mike.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Mike.
Okay. Motion by Tam, by Mike, all in favor? Good night, everybody.
Night seeing everybody.
Night y'all. Thank you, Ryan.